In the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and just.
Welcome to the regular school committee meeting on Monday, November 7th, 2022. This is your notice that this meeting is being electronically recorded. And before our meeting tonight, we had a nice spotlight event, which was the professional teacher status recognition for, I believe it was 2009 through 2022. So it was well attended and well done. So thank you to the administration for putting that on. We'll start our agenda tonight with our student advisory council update. And for that, I'll turn it over to Ian Miller and Zachary McDeeris. Welcome, guys.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. So we just put together a quick little video here to show off what the student body's been up to these first couple of months of school, really showing our pride and everything. So we're just going to talk a little bit while it plays.
So as you can see, we have all the different activities that are going on. The top left photo is the pound. Everyone was wearing purple to support one of our football players. We have the unified basketball picture, and then we also had soccer down there.
Yeah, these are just some more of the sports. These are all the girls' sports right now, like girls' soccer, field hockey, and volleyball. Just the teams are really happy to be out there.
More sports. So we have our cheerleaders, and then bottom right, we have our soccer team after we won the cup against North. So I'm in that picture. But yeah, all those teams are doing very well this year. All of them made playoffs.
We also had our unified basketball team, which they've been doing actually really well, and I think all the kids are enjoying it. And there's actually, you'll see another photo later on, there's actually a lot of student support for them as well, like the student body has shown up to a variety of their games. And we also have the marching band here. This is photos from some of our football games and our competition. We did very well this year, and we are happy to see the student body supporting us as well.
Yeah, so that's kind of the key of a lot of this is the student, not only is it like people are participating in that event, but people are showing up and supporting each other, and everyone's coming to everyone else's sports. So people are showing up to everyone's different senior nights, everyone's supporting each other, which is really nice to see.
And then just a couple more things, you know, like we've been taking advantage of our new school here, like the out-of-classroom little collaborative spaces and the new culinary stuff. The students are really enjoying like everything the new school is offering.
And we were very lucky to have Chris Heron come and speak to all the juniors and seniors. It was a very, very good presentation. It was, I think it was really important to hear for a lot of people, and everyone, really. It was just really impactful.
We also have a new group that's beginning to form. I'm sure we'll have more information for you at the next meeting, school committee meeting that is on. But there's a new group that is coming up, and they basically want to have more dialogue between the administration and like the students, and a place where students can go if they need help, or just a place to find resources and all of that. So we're excited to bring more information about that group in the future.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from? So how has the new school been so far this year? Has it?
It's been very good. I think a lot of, one of the really big things is how we have the new collaborative learning spaces. So I find it very helpful for a lot of like the math classes that I'm in. We were able to go out there, we're able to work on the whiteboards, draw it at work. And it's really helpful because it's like, if one person really understands it very well, they can show out their work, and it's kind of easy to see because like, one student's teaching another student, so we kind of see each other's point of view a little better than sometimes how a teacher would see it, because the teacher already knows it all.
And then another feature that I think students have liked and are definitely going to start liking more as the year progresses, is that the, we don't really have a, we don't have a science lab anymore in the building. Now each science classroom is its own lab, so there's no separate lab space, so you can do like your experiments and all of that, like just right in your classroom. You don't have to leave and go somewhere else. And it could be very like hands-on and stuff, so we're, I'm excited personally for that in my classes, and I'm sure the rest of the students are as well.
Mr. Storrs. Thank you, Mr. Trent. So honest opinion, so now that you've been doing this for a couple of months, is there anything that you would improve? For example, the way things flow, lunches, you know, and anything of that nature that you would actually give input that could be improved?
I think there's, with the lunches, I know that was an issue the first couple of days, but I think that was smoothed out pretty well. I know that some students have been asking us, or have been asking around for microwaves because we had those at the old school, and they're not present here. And then another thing has been X Block has been a little shaky.
Yeah, so we have a new thing called X Block, which replaces our silent sustained reading, which honestly really just kind of became like a homework period, and kind of like a socializing period, and just kind of like a break from the day. But now X Block, it's kind of like a little bit of a gap, because sometimes it's advisory, where it's like supposed to be like team, not like team bonding, but like student bonding, because it's all of the different grades are put together instead of like one grade that just has that one class. Like, I'm in classes with everyone else of all the different grades. And then, so sometimes it's kind of like a disadvantage, because I don't have that time to do my work, because I have to be doing other things like that. And it's sometimes kind of like, well, I do need this time to get ahead on some things.
And then one thing that was pushed previously was like your advisory class that you had once a week, it was completely separate from the SSR time, was a, was a group that you were supposed to be with for your whole four years. They're all in your grade, and you could really like bond with them and have a solid group, and the same teacher over that four years as well that you go to. So it was just someone you could go to if you needed to ask questions or help, and now I feel that's been kind of changed, possibly for the worse.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you for the presentation and the feedback, and look forward to hearing more from you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Next on our agenda tonight, we have superintendent's report. Mr. Sawyer?
Thank you, Chairman. Two brief updates and then a slightly more in-depth discussion about my goals. On the Aptogee front, I just had a couple of things I wanted to brief the committee on. One, we realize that now that we're getting, gearing up to use Aptogee for alerts, so you know, as we get into the winter months, you know, conceivably, we're going to have a snow day, and parents are going to be looking for communication from us. What parents can expect is that by virtue of that Aptogee app, not only will we be posting that information in the app, but we'll also be pushing that information to cell phones using the cell phone that parents give as part of being signed up for Aptogee, that's going to go out as a text message. So families will receive that information directly as a text message. As we've been practicing and getting used to using that system, we've realized that when sometimes we do school-specific alerts, it's not clear to a family that has students in multiple schools which school that text is coming from. And so we've been working on making sure that there is a prefix before each text, so we don't have enough letters to write out the school names, but we'll be using the abbreviations that we commonly use. So AHS is AHS, but you know, Hyman Fine would be H F E S, and so forth and so on. So we're going to ensure that all of those texts are preceded by the prefix that'll indicate where it's coming from. So when we as a district cancel school, it'll be, you'll say APS, because that's for everybody. But like the situation we had with Brennan, where we, you know, canceled for 10 minutes and then actually recalled that cancellation, you know, that would have said to Brennan families, it would have just said BMS. But that'll help to clarify that if you've got a kid at Studley, Brennan, and the high school, you know, which school is being canceled today. So we are working on that piece of it, and we hope that that'll help to clarify. Another issue that we're having with Aptogee is, if you've noticed, when you get a notification, if you're using the app, when we push out information and use notifications to do that, it shows up as a banner on your lock screen on your phone, and that's great. You know that there's new information, you can go check that out. Unfortunately, currently, if you click on the banner, it takes you to whatever you were viewing last in the app, not the notice itself. And so we are working with Aptogee to figure out why that's happening and to correct that, because what we want is to make it as easy for families as possible. You see that there's a notice, you click the notification, and we want that to go directly to the post that you're being notified about, not the last thing you looked at, which is what currently happens. So we're aware that that's an issue. We've received lots of feedback on that, and I just want families to know that we're aware that that's something that needs to be fixed, and we're working with Aptogee to do that. And then the last piece is that we're also working on in rooms, our teachers have all set up their rooms, and families are starting to use that, some teachers are starting to use that. As I said, this is going to take several months to get us to a place where we're all comfortable in using it to its full extent. But there's another component of it, is that we want the administration, so mainly we're talking about the principals in most of our schools, we want the administration to be able to directly communicate with specific families. So, and by the way, in the other direction as well. So rather than write an email to your principal to be able to go in and use the Aptogee app to direct message your principal in the app about a question you might have. And so that's a function that we believe we will be able to get up and running, but we're working through some technical difficulties on why that's not working currently. So as we've been talking about all along, you know, this is a work in progress, it's a pretty complicated system, it's new to the district, a lot of features that, you know, we need to work through, but that work is ongoing. And as we figure out each next step, we're taking them and taking the steps necessary to get the most out of it. But our perspective is that this is a powerful tool, and it is going to accomplish a lot of what we've been talking about for a long time, and we already feel like the communication has improved as a result of the tool. You know, for anyone paying attention to those live feeds in our schools, I think we're seeing much more consistent and richer communication from our schools as a result of this app. So just wanted to give you those updates about Aptogee in particular. All right. And then one other brief matter. When we designed the school, we intended to have a display case in the building to bring over some of the artifacts, historical artifacts, to, you know, have a display about the history of Attleboro High School as an institution in the various buildings that we've been in. And there was, there used to be some display cases in the lobby of the old high school, and you know, we had some photos and some other things. So we're at a stage now where, you know, as we work through all the things that are, you know, concerned around teaching and learning, and those were our first priorities, you know, at the start of school, we're now starting to move down the list to some other things. And I think we're at a point now where we should start thinking about how we're going to utilize the space. It's not quite as big as what we used to have, so we're going to have to make some decisions about what we display and what we don't. And so I'm looking for the school committee to weigh in and how we want to proceed on this. You know, I would assume, but I shouldn't assume, that, you know, really we're going to partner with the historical, historical commission to work with them to make sure that we, you know, do the best job we can in terms of, you know, this is really around curation at this point, to make sure that we do the best job we can and accurately and broadly capturing our history. But it's, you know, the space belongs to the schools, and before I reach out and start giving other people input in the process, it really belongs to you guys, so I was looking for some, some direction.
What, where's, where's the stuff that was in the old high school now?
I hope in a box.
And I know we turned some stuff back over to, or we voted to turn stuff back over to the industrial museum at one of the last meetings. So has it already been determined what items would be, were kept for this building?
I mean, there are some things that we have, we know we have kept, and we have in our possession, and then there are other things that certainly we have given back because we knew that we weren't going to have space for some of these things. But this, this is why, like, rather than just find the box and unpack it and cram it into the space and call it a day, which would be one approach, and you know, certainly would be better than an empty case, I feel like a more thoughtful process with some people who are better qualified to worry about some of these things, would be nice to partner with them to think through what should be in there regardless of whether it's currently in our position or possession or not, and, you know, put together a plan for the best possible use of the space.
I mean, would you feel more comfortable then with the motion instructing you to contact the Historical Society to work with them to get that space up and, up and running, but essentially up and running?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's the next step in the, I mean, we sort of were planning for that moment with the work that Mr. Geddes did with that, you know, committee leading up to this, but you know, that, you know, we kind of were all planning for a move. Now that the move's happened, you know, we really haven't been doing anything, but now we're at a place where it's time to restart that. So I don't know whether it's simply just, you know, continuing that, or whether we need a particular motion to, you know, think of this as something different from that. I leave that to you guys.
Yeah, man, I don't think you need a particular motion. I'm happy to do it if you want us to, but I think, you know, just, you know, keep on with the process, and if the best, you know, mode of operation is to, is to contact the Historical Society and work with them, you know, and do that, and, you know, they're the experts in, you know, in Attleboro's history and how to properly carry and display items, so I think that's the appropriate way to move forward.
Mr. Storrs? I was going to say, it seems like this might be a good topic, using that organization and others, to go to facilities. You know, actually have something come to facilities to present the idea, this is the space we have, this is what we recommend, you know, we discussed it with the Historical Society, et cetera, et cetera, with whomever else, and this is what they recommend, and then that can come back to the full committee so that we have an idea of what the plan is. I think that would be a good idea. It includes what you just said, which is utilizing the Historical Society, but it makes sure that it's a thoughtful process. And, you know, we take into account everything, including how much space we have, where it would be, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm assuming this is different than sports trophies and stuff of that nature, which would be in a different area?
Yeah, I mean, largely we're relying on the administration to handle its, its spaces that are part of the building like we would in any other building. This, this seems a little bit different from that on a couple of different fronts.
Mr. Larson?
Yeah, I'm actually thinking to take advantage of it in a slightly different way, if, I mean, I like the idea of having the historic preservation folks involved in it because they have more of the background, but I'm thinking that maybe we should get some of the senior art students involved in it and do it collaboratively between the students and the seniors, the senior citizens, so that they both, they both are going to look at it from two completely different points of view, and I think having them do it together, they're going to learn from each other, and I think it could be a great project for them to do, do together as part of the community. So if there was a way of working that angle into it.
Certainly can try.
All right. So.
I have what I need.
You have what you need, okay.
Thank you. And then finally, I included my goals, my proposed goals as part of your packet this weekend. As we talked about after the MCAS presentation at the last meeting, you know, we've really been working very hard to align our efforts in the district, rather than to think of everything as separate and distinct activities, but as to think of everything as one thing. And so, you know, part of that was to get to a place where the district's goals and the administration's goals and the SIPs, you know, all these things line up, and so that we're all pulling in the same direction at all times, and that it, that it's cohesive. So we believe that we're at that stage where it makes sense for my personal goals to be the district's goals. We think that this will help with transparency, so that people understand what we're doing, and certainly it will help with accountability for both, you know, my performance specifically, but as, you know, the district as a whole, right? If we make sure that the things that we're measuring and the things that we're, you know, reporting progress on are all the same thing, I think that'll help really make clear to you and the community, you know, what we're doing, why we're doing it, and how it all adds up to our strategic goals, which is what this is ultimately about. So what I've given you here is, you know, our three goals, which should be familiar, and then I've identified the strategic outcomes that we already identified last year as being what we're working on this year. So this just captures those in, in one place, written in a way that I intended to make it easier for you to understand, you know, what we've agreed upon, we'll be working on as a district this year, and from my perspective, it'll be easy for you to tell whether or not we're doing it or not. So I don't know if there are any questions or clarification that's, that's necessary.
Any questions about the goals or the metrics or the process?
So then, I think what would be appropriate to approve my goals, yes?
So at this point, entertain a motion to approve the proposed superintendent's goals for 2022, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right. The goals have been approved.
I will get to work.
All right.
That concludes my report.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have minutes from our October 17th, 22, 2022 meeting. The October 17th, 2022 minutes were circulated with your packet, your motion to approve.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next consent agenda tonight, six items. Motion to accept the donation, the amount of $20,000 from Bristol County Savings Bank for the student transition to higher education. Motion to accept a payment in the amount of $11.50 from Bay State Textiles at Hill Roberts. Motion to accept the contractual obligation, the amount of $74.75 for Planet Aid, Inc., as broken down on the check receipt dated October 20th, 2022. Motion to accept the donation, the amount of $1,000 from the Massachusetts Audubon Society to Coelho Middle School to be used for educational purposes. Motion to accept the donation of two DSLR cameras with an estimated value of $1,000 to Wam Sata to be used for the yearbook club, among other reasons, from Dolores Bernozzo. And a motion to approve an overnight international field trip proposal for a number of students to be determined in grades six through eight to travel to Italy and Greece from April 12th, 2024 through April 21st, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Larson?
I think we should just recognize, we don't get a lot of $20,000 donations. Bristol County Savings Bank, they've been a great partner over the years. This is not the first time that we've had substantial donations from them, and we actually have a branch right here of the bank in the high school, and they're a great partner in the community.
Who else? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have our subcommittee meeting's report, of which we have one, finance and budget. Mr. Larson, is you or Ms. Porter going to begin to look into the report today?
I think Mr. Larson should do it. I'll, I'll, well, you can go.
Okay, you're going to help me out?
Yeah.
Well, Ms. Porto ran the meeting for me, so.
Yes, yeah.
So it sounds like they had a great meeting on November 2nd. There were two motions that came out based on that. The first is entertain a motion to send to the municipal council for approval of payment of prior year invoices and obligations in the amount of $12,350.47, as broken down in the information that was sent out in the memorandum October 26th.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Then the second motion was motion to authorize the director of finance and control to negotiate with the provider of charging stations for the new Attleboro High School to allow the startup of these units. This will be followed by the development of school committee policy on the issue going forward, so.
So moved.
Second. So I know this was coming. Is there anything that we should elaborate on, or is it just, still just coming?
Just the, the parking lots will be, you know, now you said develop by December 1st, they have desire to activate, so it's a charge at that time.
Okay. Mr. Storrs?
So how many, how many different spots? I know over in the parking lot over here, there seems to be two spots designated for that, but overall, how many, where, is there?
Four banks of four.
Four banks of four, spaced in different areas? And beyond that, what would be the, you know, is that we're talking about a charge associated with utilizing it?
Yeah, so the units use our electricity, so the company that supplies the units has a credit card meter in there. The way you activate the charging for your cards, you can insert a credit card. Typically, there's a time limit as to where it allows you to stay there for, and it will notify you through your phone that, you know, time's up, come get your card. It also keeps a queue of people waiting to get charged, so it will notify the next person, hey, this, this area is clear, bring your card in. So the question is, what do we charge that company for the electricity they use, which will of course impact what they charge the users of the stations?
And, and that charge fluctuates based on things, right?
I, I would probably look at a flat percentage of.
Hundred percent.
Whatever our rate is, you know, two, three, four, five points more.
Okay, thanks.
Has there been a decision yet, and what's going to, what are we going to do with the money that the schools get from there?
Since they're using electricity, I would probably go back into the utility line to replace the cost of what they use.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there anything else that we should bring forward to the committee from the meetings?
No, the budget was on target. We talked about the Hyman Fine and Hill Roberts floors being completed with still some issues. Did you hear back from about Hill Roberts floor?
Sure, so the Hill Roberts floor is in, is in much better shape than the Hyman Fine floor.
Okay, yeah.
So Hill Roberts floor has been cleared to use, and we have been using it for two or three weeks now. The Hyman Fine floor has also been cleared to use, but it's been required some additional work, like business vacation to kind of finish that project up.
But it's being used by the students now?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you again for bringing it forward. I appreciate that. That's it. All right. That concludes our subcommittee meeting reports for tonight. Next, we have open forum. Is there anyone who would like to address the committee at open forum? All right. See, no one does, anyone have any new business tonight? Mr. Storrs?
Thank you, Mr. Trent. So we are getting close for our subcommittee for the logo. I think we're a week away, is what we're talking about. I've already had a conversation with Mr. Weathers. I think it's next Wednesday that we're looking to have a special meeting, where the, the subcommittee will come and present, and we'll be able to, you know, go into all the details of how we got to where we got and what we have. And then I believe it's going to be like a full presentation to the students at Powderpuff the next day, and then there's another follow-on event after that? Is that right?
Right, so we'll do a school assembly at 1:30 on Thursday.
Thursday, right.
And then there'll also be a halftime during the.
Perfect. So we're looking to have that special subcommittee meeting and the presentation next Wednesday. What time would be appropriate for Wednesday, if possible?
That's up to the.
6:30-ish?
Let me, I'll coordinate with the administration as well, because I think there are some negotiations and other things going on, and make sure.
I was wrong, it's this Wednesday for Claire.
Okay, all right. But yeah, so we'll, we'll get a notice out in the next day, in the next day or two.
Perfect.
Or within the next few days anyway, as to what the specific time is. That's perfect. Thanks. Thank you. Anyone else? Scrappy?
Yes, we have lunch at the Blue Pride Beach, for myself and Scott, and Mr. Larson was there as well. Excellent, great job of the students and the advisors. I did have one question about, it was apparently it's been decided we weren't going to have an ATM in the marketplace. I spoke with the banker real briefly just about when that was going to happen, so I wasn't sure if that's something we need to discuss as a school committee to try and get that there, because I do think that would, being a cash and check only facility, we might benefit from having outside people there with an ATM on site. So I wasn't sure if we had to introduce that, or if that's up to administration to work on separately.
Do you know why there, did they say why there was one?
I didn't press the issue, I just was curious. She said it was decided at this time that they weren't going to have one. I didn't get from who.
I don't know about the ATM, but I do know that credit cards will be accepted soon. That doesn't really answer your question, but just.
Well, I mean, that's as good as.
Inside for the only cash and.
It alleviates the pressing need for.
Definitely.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Entertained a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.